Roll call for the City Council meeting, September 17th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Council members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, and Trup.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the silent meditation and pledge allegiance. We lost a member of our staff, the city staff, lost a loved one. And we're not mentioning their names because we have not spoken to the family yet. And we aren't sure if everyone in the family is aware. But our prayers go out in silence to that individual.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that whereas this city council body wishes to offer deep sympathy to the family of George Lastman, who passed away on Friday, September 5th, 2025, and whereas George Lastman was hired to be a part of the first formal security team detail at Erie City Hall. George greeted people with a smile and a warm welcome. He enjoyed being the first person to greet a guest or employee entering City Hall from open to close. And whereas George Lastman took pride in his job, he was a true inspiration to continue his job, working during the eighth decade of his life. He was very quick with a friendly joke or conversation to all. So therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that this commendation in honor of the life of George Lastman, who will be truly missed by all who knew him, may he rest in peace.
Come on up, folks. For me, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we could find enough nice words to talk about George. He was always that smile, they hit that on the head. He was always happy, he was always there. I used to call him Georgia the Jungle, always watching out for everybody. We love him, and I'm sure you loved him too, I can tell that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ed. Thank you, Kathy, very much. Family, we offer our condolences as a council, as a whole. We knew George, and we had a lot of laughs with George. Thank you very much for taking time to accept this presentation. Next item on our agenda, repository sales. Excuse me?
Approval of the meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2025, and copies of the bills to be paid for September 19th and 26th, 2025. Council members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Trup, and Witherspoon.
Okay. Now repository sale. Are there anyone here to speak on repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on repository sales? Is there anyone here to speak on repository sales? Hearing none? Okay, at this time, public comments, anyone like to address council? Please come to the mic, speak clearly, please. Give us your name and your municipality, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Michelle Dovishaw, and I'm a resident of the City of Erie. I've been here time and time again for the same thing. And it's getting harder and harder to stand here and speak about Marcello Woodard and have silence, complete silence. Last city council was when y'all voted on $20.5 million. I don't think it's right that city council can sit up there and not say "Justice for Cello," but certain county, certain city council members can use his name when they're asking for approval for $20.5 million. I think that's outrageous. I sat and watched the meeting after I went home last, last time. And then I also heard it on real good with video. When I brought up the comment that the police chief made about the police weren't racist because they listen to rap music, and council member chuckled, and you did it again. That is so disrespectful to me. As a constituent and a resident of the city, I work with children. I, when I walk into work every day, I lead by example. I don't walk in looking just whodunit. I walk in there looking professional because I want them kids to see that there's something else, and I want them to see respect. But when county, city council members can chuckle, when people are up here with their hearts broken, but then you can say, "Cello is the reason why we need $20.5 million." How dare you! That is a slap in the face to his family, and y'all sit up there smug and disrespectful. I am all for law enforcement, all for law enforcement. But you want them to be in the community? Bring back beat clops. Let them actually talk to the people that they're working with, instead of walking up, "Oh, well, you did something, I'm racking you up and going to jail." Ever since Marcello was murdered on July 2nd, there has been so many extreme cases, all on video, nobody saying anything. How dare you! All I'm gonna say is, there's a few of you up for election. And I will make it my life's work till Election Day, to make sure that everybody that sits up there and disrespects the people that actually elected you? I'll make sure that y'all are gone. It don't make no sense. How dare you disrespect the people that put you up there? It makes no sense! And I'm sorry. Y'all haven't even said "Justice for Cello!" But y'all, y'all won't speak on that. But you did a big thing, and I know he probably worked for the city for a lot of years, no disrespect to their family. Why don't you treat the Woodards and the Sandards like that? Give them the same respect. Because that man, Marcello Woodard, that father, that son, that brother, that cousin, he was murdered by somebody else's hand. That's where you should have showed respect from. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good night, good evening, guys. My name is Mary. I'm on the Lower West Side. Wonder what you guys are gonna do about the safety during, during when it's daylight hours, and people are afraid to even take a walk around here downtown Erie. People are afraid to take a bus because you guys aren't keeping us protected. How are we supposed to walk around here without being afraid, without having to carry weapons? Is there anything you guys can do to protect the city from being afraid to come here and voice their opinion, or being able to be, able to be free and not have to be terrified to go home and be shaken up? So is there anything you guys could do? I know he's amazing, but I'm absolutely, when I walked there, I stood there shaking, scared, if I'm gonna be next one to get hurt. So if you guys can do something to make sure that doesn't happen, I appreciate it. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shamira Henderson. I live on the Upper East Side, and I'm here for Justice for Cello. I live where Marcello was killed at, well, was shot at, and then he drove off because he was shot and went to the other block. But it happened in front of my house. And that night, first of all, I want to say thank you, Dr. Titus. You're amazing. We see you. We don't see nobody else, but I see you, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I want to know if the police, the City of Erie Police, do they have training on how to treat African Americans? Because that night, when that happened to Marcello, my sister, who was in the car with Marcello, was arrested. She was arrested like she murdered Marcello. The way the officers treated her, I was right next to her. They said they were tanning her, but they put her in handcuffs. They were so rough with her, they threw her in the car. You would have thought Shamell Henderson murdered Marcello the night he got murdered. But allegedly Kevin Silinger, well, I ain't know allegedly, we know who killed him. Kevin Silinger, he wasn't even in handcuffs. They didn't throw him around. They treated my sister like she killed her boyfriend. I don't know if they was wearing body cams, but you need to look at that to see how they treated her. The City of, the Erie City Police, they're horrible towards us. They are horrible. They need some type of training on how to treat African Americans, not just men, but women. So I just ask that they get some type of training, because they want us to respect them, but they don't respect us. It's horrible how blacks are treated in Erie, from the City of Erie Police. It's ridiculous. I have no respect for them at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shamell Henderson. I was the girlfriend to Marcello Woodard. I'm standing here, brokenhearted, confused, with no answers. I want justice for my boyfriend. That's all we asking for is justice. I'm not blaming no one up here. I respect anybody that is even hashtagging "Justice for Cello." Dr. Titus, thank you so much. It don't go unnoticed, for the rest of you guys, if you have a heart, if you have family. I don't wish this pain on nobody. Just, please just hear me out. If you could just talk to someone, the DA, just ask her, can she please just speed it up? We've been patient, I am running out of patience. I don't know how to be patient anymore. I'm desperate, I need answers, I need to know what's going on. I need some type of understanding. My boyfriend got murdered in front of my house. I have to live with that for the rest of my life, I cannot get that out of my head. I will forever live with that. That night, I got arrested, I got my mug shot taken, I was placed in the holding cell for two hours, then transported to the state police, where I was interrogated. I wasn't questioned, I was interrogated. I was told I was a liar. I was treated like a criminal. I was treated like I killed Marcello. I didn't even know my boyfriend was dead. I was on my hands and knees praying, asking God to please just be with him, and please let me hurry up so I could get down to the hospital to be with him. I didn't find out Marcello was dead till 6 o'clock that morning, when they finally released me for me to go home to my house being raided for no reason. Then, it was, it was a statement, a statement that they said I made, they lied on me. I never, ever said what they said. Marcello never dragged anyone, never. He was murdered for no reason. Just watch the video. If it's not clear, just listen. You don't hear no one, no one screaming for help, like they was in distress or anything, no harm, no one. Listen to the video. That's all she gotta do is listen to the video. I don't see how many, how long do we have to wait? How long do his mom and dad have to wait? How long do his kids have to wait? How long do I have to wait? I just thank God, he allowed me to be the woman I am, that I do have patience, but I'm running out of patience. But I know God got me, and he got us. Please, if you could just talk to somebody, anybody, a friend, anything, I just, just want some type of answers. I pray every night that the ne, the next morning, we gonna hear something. How long do I gotta wait? Miss her, it hurts so bad, waking up, not, not knowing. What she gonna say? But the God I, the God I serve, I know it will be justice. He said vengeance is mine. He a God that don't let us down. He ain't never let me down, so I know we gonna get justice for Marcello. God bless you and thank you, guys, for your time.
God bless you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carla Arnon, and I am a Mill Creek resident, born and raised in Erie. I'm here tonight to insist on justice for Cello. I know others have spoken here and to the county council on the need for transparency and the systemic racism and implicit bias in our community, and many other important points. And today, I want to speak about accountability. This is the first meeting that I've been able to attend. I'm a single mom, I don't have a lot of time, but I did attend the Take Back the Sight event, a beautiful gathering of community to show support to the family, to the neighborhood organized by the Benedictine Sisters. The sisters knew the impact that walking that block on a daily basis would have on Shamell and Shamir and others. And taking back the site was the first step toward being able to not have to relive that trauma every day. The Benedictine Sisters have shown so much support to the Woodard family, yet the family has received little to no support from the people that they helped elect, peoples whose job it is to look out for their best interests. My children and I made a sign for that event that said, "Shoot at tires, not at black people." It's sickening that this police violence endemic persists throughout our nation. We need accountability, but accountability can take many forms. I know that it's gonna take some time for the DA and the state to complete their investigations in this homicide, but the other forms are things like a town meeting, and I know there's been talk of that. Another form is trained, trauma-informed therapists who can be available to the family. We all know how long it takes to get mental health services here in Erie. You can be on that list for a really long time. Maybe someone on this council can expedite that for the family members. Accountability comes in the form of accurate news reporting. Two weeks ago, the Times News reported that the district attorney released another statement, this was on August 28th. However, the news story didn't mention the existence of the video, the ring video which disproves the original statement from the state about the officer being dragged. So anyone new to the story, reading it that day, would just believe that one side presented. We need balanced reporting. The family had to wait two months for that update from the DA, two months of feeling isolated, unsupported, confused, angry, all the feels that go into healing from a trauma. If the adults are feeling all these things, think of how it's affecting the children in the community. At the very least, accountability can start with expressing your deepest condolences to the Woodard family, which includes Shamell, and not waiting 70-plus days to do it. At a recent county council meeting, the chairman said that he did this thing, that he told the family that he would do, like make a call or something like that, but he said that he didn't call them to tell them that he did it, he just did it. But I think that was a misstep, because a phone call saying, "I did what I said I'd do," is exactly what the family needs. They need somebody to validate their requests, and they need proof that they aren't being ignored, proof that they aren't invisible. It's too easy to feel invisible when you're a victim of a trauma. The last thing I'll say is that when you get called for jury duty in Erie County, you have to, you may get questions about your personal perception of the police. Would you be more than just a police officer? Would you be more likely to believe the testimony of a police officer or any other law enforcement officer because of his or her job? And would you be less likely to believe the testimony of a police officer or any other law enforcement officer because of his or her job? The lack of response on the Woodard case from elected officials and community leaders and law enforcement erodes the public trust in law enforcement. Black lives matter. Marcello Woodard's life mattered. Say his name, Justice for Cello.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deanna Chatfield. If you don't know me, I am a student at Collegiate Academy and I'm very involved in this community. Now, what I came up to talk about is probably something you've heard a lot about, is Justice for Cello. I know you guys have heard it a lot, but it's true. As a young member of your African American youth community, I hope that you can hear me loud and proud because that's what I came here to do. I'm not one to speak out loud, I'm not one to speak my mind, but I came here tonight to do this. We are told that the police are supposed to serve and protect us, but how are we supposed to believe that when Marcello Woodard was killed? No justice, no peace. He was killed. What happened to the officer? He got let go, paid leave. Now, let's just say that if it was a black person, they would be arrested and they'd be sitting in a jail cell right now, rotting away. If I'm supposed to feel safe, a youth of your community, if I'm supposed to feel safe under this department, under Erie County's Police Department, and I found out that something happened like that, I don't feel safe. Coming from a member of your youth, I hope you can find it in your heart to deep down, dig down and hear me out. It shouldn't take seventy-seven days to get justice for Marcello Woodard. It shouldn't take that long. His family shouldn't have to sit there and cry in front of you for you to find it in your heart to reach out to somebody, to reach out and get some answers. It shouldn't take this long. Everybody in this community wants change and every one of you guys have probably said that I'm gonna bring change to this community. But where's the change? I'm supposed to feel safe when I walk the streets. Day, morning, afternoon, night, no matter what time it is, I'm supposed to feel safe. I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe walking home from school. I don't feel safe walking to school because I know that if it, if it came to it, if I, putting myself in that position, if I got shot by officer, what would happen? Would my case end up like Marcello Woodard? Would anybody care? It's the things that you guys say. You guys have to, you guys have to take accountability. You said you, you said you were gonna do change. You said you wanted change. You said that if we elected you, you would sit here and you would prove change. And I don't see any change. I don't see any change for our youth. I don't see any change for even the adults in the community. And this is coming from someone who's very active. I do sports. I do ROTC. I'm, I'm always, I have over a hundred volunteer hours. I'm always in the community. I've gone to, I don't even know how many Justice for Cello protests. I shouldn't have to feel scared as a youth of your community to walk the streets because of something I seen, because something that couldn't, that you guys couldn't take care of. It's disappointing and I want you guys to know that. You guys are letting down not only Marcello Woodard's family, but you're letting down the rest of our community, the rest of the African American community. Because we all know that if it was a black-on-white crime, the black man would immediately be in jail, rotting in the cell. It would, no ifs, ands, or buts. And I know you guys, I know you guys have probably not even watched that video because I know you can't take the gut, the gut-wrenching feeling you get when you watch it. And believe me, I've watched it. It's gut-wrenching, it's horrible. I mean, who could do that to another human? Not me. I don't, not any of these people in this courtroom right now standing for Marcello Woodard, trying to get justice. Now, listen, I understand you've heard this a thousand times, Justice for Cello, Justice for Cello, but it's the truth. We need justice. Like I said, how is, how is the young African American youth community supposed to feel safe when this is going on? I'm just asking you to find it in your hearts to take care of this. It shouldn't take seventy-seven days. You guys said you want change. The community is not gonna change if they don't see you don't change because change starts with you. If you don't start to change, it's never gonna happen. And it's the truth. I'm changing. I'm trying to help my community. I'm trying to promote better things for my community. But it can't just be me working. It has to be everybody in this community. And it starts with the leaders. It starts with the leaders of this community. Because like I said, if, if you, if you, if all of you guys, if you don't start to change now, it's never gonna come. And it's gonna keep waiting and it's gonna keep waiting and our community is gonna get worse and worse as it goes on. I'm just telling, I'm, I'm just saying, please, do something for this community. If it's anything, if you, if you, if you're listening to anything I say right now, I'm saying, take care of this. Because right now, you're showing our community that you don't care about us because that black man died. He's dead. He will never be able to go back home to his kids. I just would like you to think and sit on that and think about that. And I hope that the next city council meeting, I can see change as a youth of your community. Because remember, and I want this to stick with you because it's the truth, but if you don't make that initiative to start change, it will never happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deontay Cooley, lifelong Erie resident. Kudos to the young lady who just came up here and spoke. I've heard her speak more to the situation than anybody sitting up here at council, which is crazy. The things that she said is the things that I've been thinking and seeing my entire life, being here, living in the city of Erie. I understand that PA laws don't permit us to ask, you know, to request for anybody to step, step down. But when you hear a young person speak like that, and then for me as an adult man to come in here and to hear some of the things that I've heard from some of the people, like, I'm not sure why our council as a whole was still allowing our president to be president. I'm not even sure why our president still is able to remain on council. I did some homework and some research to see at a point in time when Liz Allen quit, it was a three-three split. And I'm not even sure if this is how the, the seating is aligned up. But as you know, I'm doing more research and learning more information. We're seeing what's going on as far as like how, when it's younger people or a different generation trying to do something, there's a problem. And then it came to an appointment to our mayor just, oh, well, let's just appoint someone to be on city council when there was twelve other people who were excited to be interviewed for that. From what I was told and information I obtained, that was illegal. Well, I guess the two-day break to make the, that was illegal to be able to still sit here. But when you have young people coming in here and crying and asking for change, and you have people who will sit here and serve multiple terms or run multiple seats and just to stay and play or don't want to lose their buddies, it's very unfortunate and it's very disheartening. When you have people who sit up here and antagonize and joke and play about life and make votes on decisions to sway for their friends, it's very disheartening and unfortunate. Since the last meeting I've spoken, since I spoke on podcasts about my feelings and my opinions about things that have been said in this room, I have been reached out to from community leaders and community figures such as Bishop Brock. Hey, we need to talk to Deontay. We need him to get him to calm down, keep his mouth closed, don't talk so much. You know, there's been different people who are high leaders or figures in the black community who are advocating for people who are on the council. I'm aware that I'm not allowed to say people's names, but we all know who I'm talking about. Somebody's child even reached out to me and said, hey, that comment on the hot mic was taken out of place because his buddy was joking with him and saying, when it's time to go, you can work with me. Which makes me wonder, why are we allowing people to serve on our council and to crack jokes about life or to make comments on a hot mic like they made? And then we still have to sit here and, and, and and allow those individuals to preside over us or allow their friends to come in here and make comments or to intimidate us? I'm not intimidated by anybody. So I'm not sure who the next person is gonna call me to sit down and have a conversation about you, sir. But I don't want to talk to anybody. I didn't make anybody in this room make any statements. I didn't make anybody in this room make any comments. I came here and spoke to my concerns about the lack of the work that's been done for Marcello Woodard and I'm being antagonized by friends of people who serve on council. I'm being antagonized by leaders of the community and I'm not intimidated and I'm not afraid. So I came here to say that in person. Please, since I can't speak to one individual, tell your friends, tell your family members, tell your goons, stop watching me. I don't need you in my, my social media. I don't need you sending me messages or inboxes because your godfather or your father made a mistake or slipped up and said something. I'm not sure why you still serve. I'm not sure why we even, as a council as a whole, allow it to get to where it's always three-four and where the three-four always comes from. I'm not sure why there's always affirmative votes and, and people won't use their voices. But we have young people who are coming and now representing the Erie Public Schools, speaking up for their concerns. How is it that we can sit here and, and still continue to be silent? And when you all have the opportunity to create special boards and special committees, why isn't there having been a, a civilian review board? I remember one meeting, somebody said, well, it, it was ineffective or it's tried to, but why haven't we had a conversation about anything? The public are allowed to the caucus meetings. Maybe we need to start coming in there and sitting at the round table with y'all. But again, it just seems as though y'all playing politics around here. So Justice for Cello does not just mean arrest because like I said before, we know law doesn't happen here. But now you have people coming here, speaking about the Erie Police. Now you have people who are saying they're, a young person who's saying they're afraid to walk to and from school. That should be a concern of some of you all who work in the Erie Public Schools, who pull on that purple and gold. That should be a concern of yours. Who served and who was a teacher for the Erie Public Schools at one point in time or another. That should be a concern for you all who serve this community, who have had an impact on young people's lives forever to where now we can sit here and play politics and make comments like, "Out on a hot mic." But I'm the bad guy and your friends want to come reach for me. Please, tell your friends to leave me alone. Please do something about our community. Please stop playing up there with the votes. Please stop siding with the BS. Do what's right for the people because unfortunately, it's seven of you and three people have to suffer with the mess. So when they make mistakes, they get held liable too because we're not taking, we're not taking this lightly. And we coming for everybody. And unfortunately, the people who have served us well are gonna fall in the crossfire because they've done their portion to stand up to the two of you and the two of you have joined them. And you just seem like you don't know what's going on or what to do. So we can't wait for November, but I wish that you would just step down and not let us stop coming down. Tell your friends to leave me alone.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Malcolm Poyle. I'm from Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm also here to speak on Marcello Woodard. I've been wrestling with this since July 2nd and by no means I'm not here to holler at anybody. But we, we, we have to do something. We gotta get this right. Today is day seventy-seven. I was expecting that we would hear something from somebody. I was at work earlier and I was sitting here like, it's seventy-seven days and I know you can't say anything. But with that being said, we could have formed a civilian review board or something to move this forward. It's, it's too many minds up here not to help us. I have five sons. And ever since this has happened, I hate for them to walk outside that house because I'm afraid that they might not come back to that house. I'm still wrestling with Marcello's dad and his mom and his sisters and his girlfriend and his kids not being able to see him. I'm, I'm wrestling with the social media that I see that people think this is funny and we all should be able to look at each other and understand that the world that we are living in now is very dangerous. We live in a dangerous world. Erie, Pennsylvania is a dangerous city because nobody is willing to speak up for Marcello Woodard besides the citizens. I'm a citizen. I've lived here my whole life. I'm fifty-two years old and I hate to say that things are gonna change. I don't see change. I don't believe that you guys can make change because nobody is able to say anything. Like, I, I, I'm friends with a few of y'all on social media. I see y'all posts and in my mind, I'm just like, how can they post that and not say anything about Marcello Woodard or his family? I'm, I'm confused. I want to be unconfused. I'm not here to give anybody any kudos. Kudos come when you help the citizens of Erie, Pennsylvania achieve the goal of making sure that Marcello Woodard is resting in peace. He is not resting in peace right now. In fact, we have a killer that is at home enjoying his family. And what's even more crazy about him being at home? He's at home able to get his finances in order because if he goes to jail, it's gonna be a chance that he can get bonded out. And guess what? We gave him seventy-seven days to raise some money so that he is able to get a rain to come back home and continue to move. But yet, we are still seventy-seven days in with Marcello Woodard being killed. In fact, he was murdered. We have to understand that. And I, I don't want to throw that word around because that is a big word to use. But that is what happened to him. He was murdered July 2nd. When I woke up, the way that my stomach feels now is the way that my stomach felt July 2nd when they said Marcello Woodard was killed by his probation officer. I said, that can't be true. There's no way in Erie, Pennsylvania that that could happen. A probation officer? Let's not forget that he is the first person in Pennsylvania to be killed by their probation officer. He is the second person in the United States to be killed by their probation officer. This is unheard of. And for us to sit here and stay quiet like this is nothing. It messes with my mind. Again, it goes back, I have five sons. I hate for them to go outside because I don't want to get that phone call that they got. I don't want to see people on social media crying or saying Marcello was a bad person. When this first happened, the first thing that I said is, we gotta protect his name. We have to protect Marcello Woodard's name because everybody, and I understand this, everybody don't feel the way that I feel about Marcello Woodard being killed. And that's not okay. He was a human being. Y'all had, and I'm, I'ma wrap this up. Y'all talked about the zoo and the money for the zoo y'all last meeting. I watched that. And I didn't understand how we are so concerned about animals and not human life. Like, some of that money that is going to the zoo can actually come back to the people because again, remember I said, we should have a civilian review board. Let's focus on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Spears and I'm speaking for Justice for Cello. This has been a long process. It shouldn't even take this long, technically. And for everybody to say he was murdered, the coroner actually made it a homicide. You got all these people that were doing homicides and they're sitting in jail and this one's sitting at, at home making money and crap like that. That is uncalled for. When is justice gonna be served? And then I want to bring, because I felt horrible Friday night at the football game when all that fight broke out, the cops actually said, "Get the fuck out of here and shut up." And I was worried about a couple of those kids that got hurt. They shouldn't even been talk to me like that. You should have had more respect and listened to what was being said than tell somebody to get shut the fuck up and get out of here? And I'm a person that I worked for.
Excuse me, I understand your frustration. But we have people and kids watching this.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But it's just, that's the words that were said to me, okay?
I understand, yes ma'am. Thank you.
I'm here for Justice for Cello.
I'm here for Justice Ficello.
Your name, please.
My name is Terry Twilley. And I'm Erie County. My name is Terry Twilley. I'm Erie County. I want to talk today about discretion. I'm talking about a couple of other things too. I want to say that like when, you know, when I was a little girl, and I have to say it, when I was a little girl, I had a lot of cousins. And my mom would always show me how to change a pamper. And I remember wanting to get there to change that pamper, just to be a big girl. And I thought, I remembered how everybody was happy when the poo poo was changed. Yeah. So you as a woman, you want to change things. You want to make the bad things good. That's just in your nature, you know? That's just the person that you become, the one that cleans things up and goes over and nurtures things. Then, my brother got killed, very young, like I was a teenager. My brother got killed and then it was about nabbing the criminal. I went to school just so that I can do that because I felt like they threw my brother away with nothing. And then when you hear this thing that comes back again, it's back again, you remember the thing that happened. It was a wound and maybe it healed, but all it takes is a little rub and it's open again. So today, I'm standing here because it's open again. Like every time you see this, it's a wound that opens again and you can't help it because you're the nurturer, you're the one that want to fix everything. So in effort for me to nab the killer, I went to school, I studied everything I could study, and then I learned that there were more killers involved. And what I mean by that, it was the people that didn't say nothing. And like I want to give Malcolm, Jerry, and Terry their flowers for being people with courage because it has to be a faith-like thing. You know, you move even although you don't know what in the world comes next. We live in this time, the time that we're living in is a very turbulent one. Nothing is, you know, nothing. You know, you don't know anything. Like we come down here and we were asking for Justice Ficello, knowing that some of us never got justice. I remember crying in my book because I knew justice didn't exist. It didn't exist. It didn't exist for me, but I still had to write this lie down, a piece of paper and say, "It's justice for all." But we don't have justice for all. We never did, not in this city, not in this place. That is just our story, you know? And that's why we're, as a group, I don't want to say where, I don't want to speak to everybody, but that's why I'm here. Because I feel like, you know, the faith, faith is believing in things that doesn't exist, you know? I believe that if we speak things into existence, it'll be. So when these people come, they can speak things into existence. And then I'll say this because I don't know, I talk slow and I'm not really prepared like I wanted to be, but I did not want to come today because I told somebody I was coming and I didn't want to be a liar. I want to say it's fundamental that has, it's the fundamental that has us mental. The due process that was gone. It was the quickness of the fire and the silence for so long. It was the unequal that's a sequel, the art of feelings coming back. It's the wave of today where justice is under attack. Now, it's not just Erie that's under attack, all these things are going on around us. I think that Erie has the opportunity to show something great because like they said, this is only the second case. This case will be reviewed by anybody who has such an incident happen to them in their city, okay? It will be reviewed, it will be looked at. We have to have some kind of, we have to have some kind of something for the people because that is the, that is what you call the unequal. Like, it's like it's messing up the commonwealth and good for the common health when that happens. Peace.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Staszewski. I'm a resident of the city of Erie and a resident of the county of Erie. And I had a question about the letter that was sent to Governor Shapiro on July 25th from all members of council and the mayor. Was there any response from that when it was sent? So I'm seeing no. Like, and then I would ask the mayor and the council president, are we okay with that? The governor not answering a letter from the mayor and all members of Erie City Council? Like, that represents ninety-two thousand people, doesn't it? Are we going to follow up on that at all? Is that weird that he hasn't even like said that he got it? He hasn't done that either? Because I see that he can like sign bombs and ammunition and scrap in Pennsylvania. So I found it weird that he couldn't respond to a letter like this from Erie City Council and the mayor of Erie. And the letter to the district attorney, there was four members of city council on that. I was just interested if the other members did anything else separately? Because at the one meeting, sir, the council president, you said that you would do it alone if it wasn't unanimous. So that was almost two months ago, so I'd just like to follow up on that.
I did.
Thank you. Can we know what you said or is it pure private or?
I spoke with the county president, county council president.
The letter to the district attorney?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I was wondering, also, we keep talking about advisory bodies that can be made. Is there any progress in Harrisburg? There's the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. We could do something similar in Erie. That could be like a long-term thing too. Is there any progress on anything with that? Okay, thank you. And I've studied history and I've seen that there's been forums for multiple things in the course of our history. So I would also ask why that wouldn't apply in this situation, any type of forum? Would that be a question for the solicitor or the council president? Like, according to the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, you can ask questions in public comment. I know it's your guys' like choice if you answer them, but like if we could have something here? So no response on why there couldn't be a forum for the situation at all? Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Strausser. I'm a citizen of Erie, Erie's Lower East Side. I actually came here to talk about some other things that were more on the positive side, but since we are still dealing with the Justice for Marcello stuff, I wanted to, I guess now, give my thoughts on that. In that being a retired police officer and my degree's in criminal justice and stuff, I have to kind of right now side on the side of the community and the outcry that's going on. For there to be seventy-seven days and they haven't made a decision yet on how this is going to move forward, whether, you know, someone had done something wrong in law enforcement or, you know, what the circumstances are. Seventy-seven days is a long time. And I ask everyone to think about, you know, people talking about the dangerous world and that danger is even here in Erie. Think of the event that took place in this past week, week and a half where Charlie Kirk was killed, was assassinated. And within a week, ten days, they have that person in custody and he's already gone through his preliminary, he's had his charges read to him and stuff. And here we are in Erie, Pennsylvania, seventy-seven days later and we don't know where we're at with the Marcello case. Why is there so much silence and taking so long? Does the district attorney need outside help? Does the Pennsylvania State Police, who's supposed to be doing the investigation, need help? Maybe they need to bring in the federal agencies to help with the resources to try to figure this all out. But anyhow, that's kind of just my perspective as someone that's in law enforcement. It's highly unusual to me that it would take seventy-seven days or longer. Who knows how long it's going to go at this point? So maybe that's something yous could talk to the district attorney about. And I'm sure there are a lot of other people in law enforcement scratching their head on what's all going on here. But anyhow, on the positive thing I wanted to talk about was the opening of the UPMC Neighborhood Center on the Lower East Side of Erie, which I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for that. I talked to the staff there with the center and with UPMC. And one of the major services they're going to provide, they're working with Second Harvest Food Bank to provide a food pantry for citizens over on the Lower East Side and in Erie. And they're, the holdup right now, I guess, is the food pantry being able to get the infrastructure in there. So I'm figuring that's probably like the refrigeration units and all that type of stuff. But hopefully they'll get that taken care of. Some of the other services they help with is job searching and to let people know about other community resources. I want to talk to them because I've been thinking about some things that maybe they could look at providing other services like personal care items for people on Erie's Lower East Side and Erie, anyone that attends that center. Cleaning items and maybe even put in like a diaper depot center there to help families that have children that are struggling financially and like single, single-parent moms raising their children. And then the next thing on the positive, I was able to attend on Saturday, September 13th and Sunday, September 14th with the RAM organization coming back to Erie for the second year in a row, the medical dental vision event they had that provided free services to the citizens of Erie there. Last year was very, very successful. Actually, the pair of glasses that I have on here, I had gotten last year there. And I was also able to get another order that they have to put in by mail. Unfortunately, they didn't have the volunteer ophthalmologist to do the exams and stuff, but if you had prescription, they would send it in and process it for you. Lastly, real quickly, I just wanted to let yous know that I have contacted Senator McCormick's office to set up a meeting or a phone call because of how everything's going in the society today to discuss the Energy, Technology, and AI Summit that was last month and to see about what he could help us with, with the ninety-two billion dollars of private sector investment that's being made into Pennsylvania by those companies. So hopefully I'll have more for that in future months. And lastly, events for Erie, coming up is the, we've had great weather for our ethnic festivals and summer events and that we have the Irish Festival starting tomorrow at St. Pat's and the pre-game block party for the Otters on Saturday. So hopefully we can, we can have some positive things happening here in Erie into fall and then into winter. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Mike?
Ordinances for first reading. Council File 16557, pending ordinance number 672025. Amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by installing, by the installation of stop signs at five intersections. Lakeside Drive and Eagle Point Drive, stopping at Eagle Point Boulevard. Lakeside Drive and Euclid Avenue, stopping at Euclid Avenue. Lakeside Drive and Sanford Place, stopping at Sanford Place. East Eighth Street and Bacon Street, stopping at East Eighth Street. East Eighth Street and March Road, stopping at East Eighth Street. Sponsored by Council Member Titus, seconded by Council Member Flores, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16557, and now known as Official File Ordinance 672025, be finally passed by the city council. Council Member Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 672025, finally by yeas seven nays zero. Council File 16558, pending ordinance number 682025, appropriating the sum of eight thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, from the FFY 2023 Certified Local Government Grant. Sponsored by Council Member Flores, seconded by Council Member Nelson, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16558, and now known as Official File Ordinance 682025, be finally passed by the city of Erie Council. Council Member Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance Number 682025, finally by yeas seven nays zero. Council File Number 16559, official ordinance, pending ordinance number 692025, appropriating the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue donation to provide for the expenditure thereof, the Cockwa Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Funds were appropriated in 2024 and received in 2025. Sponsored by Council Member Nelson, seconded by Council Member Titus, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16559, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 692025, be finally passed by the city council. Council Member Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 692025, finally by yeas seven nays zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16560. An ordinance amending and supplementing Article 1301 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, namely known thirteen oh one of the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, namely known as the City of Erie Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, AKA SALDO, and specifically to amend Articles one, two, three, four, and five, which redefines major and minor subdivisions as well as revises the review process for SALDO applications, and promotes a modern and consistent approach to the development and/or land subdivision in the City of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, that Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-five-six-zero, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmember Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt City Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-five-sixty by yeas seven, nays zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen-five-sixty-one, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, specifically Part One of Article one thirteen point oh nine, F1, whereby the monetary limit in the form of a percentage and/or lesser amount for the inter-fund transfers authorized by the mayor without prior council approval is increased. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus, that Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-five-sixty-one, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmember Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt City Council File Ordinance sixteen-five-sixty-one by yeas seven, nays zero on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Any separations? Motion to move the balance, Councilmember Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Motion approved, seven zero. Mr. President, this takes us to committee reports.
Hey, thank you very much. Start with Councilwoman Schoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, I attended the Jefferson Society major appearance of President Barack Obama at the Erie Insurance Center, and I felt safe. I felt safe walking there. I felt safe being there. I thank the Jefferson Society, our police officers, and the security, and anyone who had anything to do with it. I didn't have to wait in long lines, got there early, and walked to my seat. And the big takeaway for me at the end of the evening was that he mentioned kindness, and how we definitely need kindness in our world today. I do want justice for Cello. I feel that in my bones and in my heart. I do want to mention that it's not just the Benedict and Sisters who do the Take Back the Sight. They have been doing this for years in collaboration with the Sisters of Mercy, and the St. Joseph Sisters, and any sisterhood. I have attended several in the past years. I attend when I hear about it, when I know about it, and if I am available at the time. The night of Take Back the Sight for Marcello Woodard, it was very beautiful in that, yes, they were able to do that entire intersection, which made it very beautiful. Very moving. I also presented flowers to Marcello's family on his birthday outside of the Erie Courthouse when they had that. We have a baseball playoff game on Thursday. I bought tickets for that, and I'm excited to go, and hopefully the Sea Wolves will win. I was on the planning commission by Zoom. My husband had his car parked in the Car Event Show last Friday in front of Like My Tie, and that's always a fun night. I want to say happy belated birthday to Mr. Tom Hagan on his ninetieth birthday. I heard there was quite the celebration, and there should be. He has done much for our community. I had attended a weekend in Southport, North Carolina this past weekend for a cousin's wedding. And we went to Oak Island, and the wedding was by Cape Fear River. And that is a very well-to-do community, and I had a lot of fun attending the wedding. But I do appreciate our sunsets just as much here in our Erie, where it's definitely more affordable to live than there. Today, I spoke with Dan Seraphin, who has a market on Twenty-Fourth and Ash that's been in the community, maybe a hundred years. I don't know the exact history of it, but it's been around for a long time. Tomorrow, from three to six, they have Eat and Thrive. Celebration, well, it's not a celebration. The Erie County Health Department will be there from three to six. And they team up with the Oak Street Health System, and you can get a health check and then a coupon to spend healthy food at the Seraphin's Market there. There's going to be a Watch Fire, POWMIA, this Friday, September nineteenth, I believe, and they're at the foot of Holland Street. I have a few friends from the Vietnam veterans who put this on, and it's a very respectful time to honor those who have served our country, lost at war, missing in action, prisoner of war. That's a peaceful way to pray for peace in your heart around the fire with your fellow friends, and think of the sacrifices made to all the people who have served our country. And there's going to be a gallery night on Friday and the Irish Festival this weekend. So, and I did attend the Erie Historic Preservation Meeting, if I didn't mention that. Oh, the main thing I do want to say, and I have said this before, but I am reiterating it. On the Sunday after Marcello Woodard passed away, at Second Baptist Church, Pastor Daryl Cook talked about no KNO, no peace, KNO, no justice. Nikki Page did a talk. She is an influential lawyer who is now in Erie, but who had been involved with the New York City Justice. That is online, where people can go and listen to it again. Because at that time, she talks, and I distinctly remember her saying, "You're not going to get an answer today. You're not going to get an answer tomorrow. You're not going to get an answer in a week." And she did say it takes sometimes months. And she did call for peace and patience. It's a very, very good hour of listening to her, Pastor Cook, and others. And I suggest if people have access to the internet, to listen to that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Troop?
President, thank you. I attended the event last night at the arena for Obama, put on by the Jefferson Society. It was a great event. I was really, really excited to see some of our, as you know, I do work in the public school system, some of our students there with our superintendent and school board president. One young man came to my office, he was at my door at eight AM this morning, and he told me how excited he was to meet President Obama. So he was really excited about that. And this was a young man who, when he first started at Erie High, was, he had some troubles. And he, I've seen him turn around, which a lot of kids do, including myself. You know, I was a ninth grader, I remember myself, and turned around. So, you know, most of our kids are really good kids in our, in our city, you know? And I just want to say, I always say that, people send me videos when they see something happening on Twenty-Ninth and Cherry. Mo, is this happening at Erie High School? And I say, well, if you're going to send me those videos, send me the good videos too, of the good kids, because most of our kids are really good, and most of the kids in the city are really good. And even the ones that get in trouble a little bit when you sit them down and talk to them, they're really, actually really interesting to talk to. They just need a little more, they might need more time, more help, or whatever, whatever it is. But most kids are really good kids. I also attended the Hagan Birthday Bash. Happy birthday to him. That was great. A lot of, a lot of great people there. I saw Councilman Brzezinski there, so that was, that was interesting. This Friday, I'll be attending the celebrity fundraiser at Novo Roerter, such as the St. Joseph will be doing that. You know, I think it's the Justice for Cello movement. I mean, no matter what side of that you sit on, you know, you have to have respect for those people that have continued to not let that movement die, for their friend, for their father, for their brother, for their cousin. You know, you do have to have respect for that, no matter what side you may be on. Just going to mention some of the names, because I feel like they, they deserve, they, they've shown passion for the, for the situation. So Michelle, Mary, Shamir, Shamel, Carla, Deanna, Deontay, Malcolm, Brenda, Terry, Jerry, Bob. I was a passionate, you know, sometimes people may come across as harsh. You know, I remember being that person that used to come across. And, you know, when you're in a passionate, passionate situation, sometimes things come across like that. But like I said, you have to have respect for it. And the question, the big question is, how long will we have to wait? That's what I keep hearing, how long will we have to wait? I also think the other thing is, we have to prepare ourselves for whatever the outcome is going to be. As a city, we have to start, like how we were talking about, we want to prepare for snowstorms and this and that. I think we have to prepare ourselves for whatever the outcome, final decision, decision is going to be. So that's something to think about. And good to see Daria Devlin there. I'm starting to see her all over town, football games and everywhere else. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brzezinski.
The gentleman said it all. Nice job, Mr. Troop. You know, I was forty years of education too, and that was always the thing that I always believed. The kids are good. The kids are good. Sometimes we have to show them which way to go to be good, but they want to be good. And love every one of them. And the crazy ones are the ones we love the most. Hey, with that, it was good seeing you in your garb. Mr. Troop played at Mr. Hagan's birthday party. I hope I didn't hurt Mr. Hagan. I gave him the old Polish bear hug of love that Polish people do. Him being German, I'm not too sure he was really happy with the hug, but he smiled. He's a good friend. Tomorrow's Erie Events meeting, so I don't have anything to give officially on what's going on there. There is talk between the city and Erie Events as far as what's going on with the zoo, and we'll fill that in as the solicitor works with their folks, and we get a good, solid foundation and path for that zoo to be successful. That being said, good luck trying to get across the bayfront. By the time we get used to it, they'll probably be done. The regular path will be there. But I can remember, they, they talked about those pedestrian crossovers that never happened. So sometimes it makes you wonder. I remember when they were talking about those things, that time, I think it was Pettit, that said they didn't have the funding for it yet. So the money, always comes the money, Mayor, doesn't it? Always comes the money. Anyway, that being said, I can't wait to see the Irish Festival. That's the time of the year that, I'm old, Brzezinski. Everybody should be Irish on St. Patrick's Day and the Irish Festival, St. Pat's. Thank you and good night.
Thanks, Dr. T.
Thank you. The Erie Land Bank met on this past Monday. They've got a change in leadership. Sumner Nichols was sworn in as the chair. Moving forward, they will, they meet the third Monday of each month. EMTA will have their next meeting on the twenty-second, so next week at four PM. And I'm going to use the rest of my report to just, I've spent a lot of the past few weeks talking with a lot of community members, either in my capacity as a therapist, or in my capacity as an elected, or capacity of the nonprofit. And our community is in a lot of pain. There is a lot of pain that is happening right now with what we're seeing from social media to, to on the news, to here locally. And my, my heart is aching. And I don't, I don't want to make this, it's not about me, but to, to hold the space for the pain that so many in our community are experiencing right now. And I know that there are many therapists, and there are a lot of nonprofits, and we have the Crime Victims Center who, who are offering services. But I will, I will ask my fellow practitioners in the area that if you have the capacity to reach out and assist with some of the trauma-informed therapy that needs to be happening right now, especially with our young people who are experiencing so much, please, please do so. And I know that's, that's a heavy lift on those who are giving so often. But I'm, I'm just calling on us to, to just kind of meet this moment right now. And, and to be kind and to take care of one another because things are, things are, they're going to get more difficult for the next few years. And it really is going to be on us as the local electeds and the local leaders to, to rise up and to make sure that our community members are protected. That message is, is radiating loud with me. And to say I'm disappointed in where we are with the movement of this case would, would be an understatement. And I understand it takes time. But again, it comes down to the, just the openness and the transparency about the process. the transparency about the process, so that people are feeling heard, because when people feel unheard in the moment of pain, it creates room for not great things to happen. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you. Councilman Nelson.
My liaison assignment for the Airport Authority is next week, so I don't have a report on that today, as far as the Justice for Cello comments that were made today. I just want to point to some of the big investigations of people that have been murdered or violence. You know, we had, we had the assassination last week, and the head of the FBI comes out and talks about the DNA on the rifle immediately, giving everybody updates as fast as he gets them, and then federal prosecutors are coming out saying, this is going to, they're going to end up throwing out the murder weapon if you do that. Like, you can't give information for everything. We had an officer get shot two years ago. That did not get to trial until this month. That was an officer that was shot, and it didn't get to trial until this month. You know, I mean, this is stuff that will be taking time, and, you know, the, a lot of times, I think our silence is an example of that we don't have answers on a lot of this stuff in this particular office. And to elevate the mood a little bit, we have Porch Fest coming up. The last Saturday of this month, I've been organizing this event for six years with a couple of my friends in the neighborhood of the West Bay Front. This year, we'll have 24 bands. It's a free event where you just walk around, listening to bands on porches. Mo, what address are you at this year, you know?
Good question.
I think it's like 300 Block of West 9th Street.
Is it 422 something?
422?
Yeah, 422.
That sounds about right.
I think that's what it is.
400 Block of West 9th Street, catch him on Saturday morning, he's the four o'clock act. We've got 24 bands, it's some of the best acts in town. We just get a bunch of the local businesses to sponsor it, and you just walk around, the EMTA provides a trolley to drive you around. One of the breweries sets up a little tent in the park, and that would have been a special event even if we passed that ordinance. And then, and they got some food trucks there, too, so it ends up being a real fun family event, so come on out to the West Bay Front neighborhood, all over in the neighborhood on the 27th. That's it.
Councilman, real quick, it was 422 West 9th?
Yeah, 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 West 9th.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right, I'll go over my committee report. September 16th, we had, the city had their Planning Commission meeting at 1:00 PM. September 9th, we had the zoning hearing board meeting at 1:00 PM, and then September 8th, we had the Historic Review Commission at 1:00. We will be having the Environmental Advisory Council meeting on September 24th at 3:00 PM. These meetings are recorded, so you can go back and watch them on our YouTube or on our Facebook. This past Saturday, September 13th, was the Fiesta in the Square. We had a great turnout. It was great seeing all the vendors and all the food, and just seeing our community come together to celebrate other cultures in our community. I know that the Sea Wolves are having their playoff game this Thursday. Councilmember Schaff had mentioned, this is the fourth year in a row that our Sea Wolves have made it to the playoffs, so I definitely recommend people pay attention to our guys, they're doing great work, and it's a very entertaining experience for the family to go to a baseball game in our city. I also wanted to make a comment that 77 days is too long to not have answers. I know that the Justice for Cello movement has been patient, they've been crying out to every person who will listen, and they have come to counsel quite a few times. I know that our governor had passed legislation for the parole officers to wear body cams. I'm disheartened that our parole officer was not wearing any body cam. I would like for all future parole officers to be wearing body cams. I think that should be a push that we put pressure on, so that if this ever did happen again, we would have firsthand video-recorded evidence to move things along. I know that right now, we're going off of video cams of Ring and a whole bunch of other things that are just diluting the process, and it's taking a lot longer than we need it to, but I would like for people to start pushing for our parole officers to be wearing body cams. We do not need this tragedy to happen again, and there not be any evidence with body cams when our governor has signed legislation, and it just hasn't happened. So, that's all I wanted to say. Please be very diligent when you are going through the Blasco Library's parking driveway. Pedestrians need time to walk across. I understand that we have to work together, but the pedestrians are the priority. You are in a vehicle, you can slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no question in my mind that everyone on council and the administration supports Justice for Cello. We do it in our own individual ways. We do make contacts, and the contact that I was asked to make was to the president of county council, and I did. He spoke directly to the DA, and a lot of the information she wasn't privy to share with him at that time, by law. Yes, it's been a long time, much too long. And the longer it takes, the more nervous people get. People begin to think, regardless of whatever the decision is, if it wasn't, if it isn't what they think it should be, they'll be dissatisfied. And the length of the decision-making is not acceptable. But we, as city council, have no authority to demand any information from the DA. We support justice as best we can. Mayor?
I'm just going to say two things real quick, follow up on what a lot of you said. First is, I was very impressed with Barack Obama last night as well. That was a great concert, I really, really enjoyed it, it meant a lot. Also, I saw a lot of people there that I hadn't seen in a long time. I kind of walked around for a while, just talking to people. And the other thing I just want to say, that like many of you, all of you, I think, I also support Justice for Cello. I agree with what you've, what you said on that, and I don't know how long, much longer it's going to take, but hopefully that will be happening sometime soon. Thank you. Anything?
I have no report.
No report. Because of attorney-client privilege, I can't report anything.
Mr. President, I do want to reiterate what Mr. Strasser said about, we do have our first hockey game with the Otters on Saturday. So he mentioned that there's a tailgate, and then the game. Thanks.
Okay, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
City Council meeting adjourns at 8:03 PM. Councilmember Witherspoon, Troop, Titus, Schaff, Nelson, Flores, and Brzezinski.